Okay. Stand for the pledge. Sheriff, you'd lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Welcome, everybody, and good morning.
Good morning.
Today, this is our 11th meeting of the year. It is Thursday, March the 18th, at 10 o'clock a.m. And before we get into the business portion of our meeting, I'd like to recognize our sheriff and a new member of the sheriff's department, or the family, I shall say. Jerry, the floor is yours.
This is the newest member of the Mahoney County Sheriff's Office. He's going to be assigned, or his primary duty is going to be assigned to the human trafficking task force. What a lot of people don't realize, and what we've discovered over the last couple of years with this task force, is that much of our crime is child pornography, unfortunately. And with that type of a crime, many individuals hide this type of information on stick drives, tablets, laptops. And this dog is trained primarily to detect a component that's within all of this electronic equipment and is tested, or is able to-
Oh my God, that's amazing.
-smell that. Yeah, it's awesome. Our unit has relied upon Cuyahoga County over the last two years, where we do search warrants. We've been able to use their dog. I'm not sure how many law enforcement agencies or task forces have a dog like this.
I believe he's the second in our state.
He might be the second in the state of Ohio. We know Kentucky was in his same graduating class, and that was the first dog for the state of Kentucky. So he's absolutely awesome. He's exceeded everything we thought he would be. And he'll just be a good representative of the Mahoney County Sheriff's Office. So we just wanted to bring him over here. He did not, I believe we did not pay for this dog, right? We had to pay for our officers' lodging and for officers' training. These are dogs that are originally trained to be service dogs. You could speak. This is Deputy Jeff Ridge. Jeff is the handler. We picked Jeff for a reason. He's an awesome, dedicated deputy. They're going to be great partners together. And I'll allow him to speak, because he certainly knows a lot more than I do.
Jeff, if you'd please address us, that'd be great.
Sure, thank you. So Bubba is two years old, and he was trained by Todd Jordan of the Jordan Detection Canine, which is in Indianapolis. He's the 50th dog to be trained, which is neat, because our county is 50. And William Walker's radio number was 50, so that's a neat little thing there. He's sponsored and paid for by Operation Underground Railroad. And that is an organization, a nonprofit, that exists to combat human trafficking in the United States and around the world. So they sponsored six dogs, I'm sorry, seven dogs this class, and one was sponsored by another human trafficking organization that fights that as well. He's an English Labrador Retriever. And he's just great.
And Labs.
And he finds things such as thumb drives, you know, cell phones, like the sheriff mentioned already.
Who would think a dog could detect something internally, as like a computer component?
Right.
It seems like you'd have to have an electronic thing to do it, but here a dog can do that. I find that really amazing.
He doesn't care about electronics unless he's working. So he knows when it's time to work. He may know where they're at in the room, but some people have asked, well, wouldn't it drive him crazy to smell all these electronics? Not really, because unless he's working, he just leaves them alone.
So if there's pornography on a computer, a laptop, that dog will know it's on there. Is that correct?
Well, he won't specifically know it's on there, but he'll know that there is some storage device. So we generally know what we're looking for.
Right.
But the perpetrator will hide those, obviously, in their house or wherever they- So he comes in and he can smell that. We can't smell that. So we do our best to find the devices that we're looking for, the storage devices where they download these images and videos of child pornography and child abuse. But we obviously can't smell it. And so when you have something small, like an S.D. card, a micro S.D. card, that's hidden somewhere in that house, he can detect that. And so what I'll do is I'll bring him through a room, and I'll work clockwise through a room, and I'll methodically go through the room, and I'll just tell him to seek. And we'll keep going low, middle, high. And if there's something in there, his first indication is that he sits, his primary, he'll sit if he smells something. And his secondary is that he'll scratch or grab, try to grab a hold of it. So that's how I know that he's hitting on something.
Mr. Commissioner, and suspects, they hide the evidence on an S.D. card, which we all know what those look like, but now it's very common to hide on a SIM card, which is even smaller inside of a phone. So when you're talking about a 2,500-square-foot home, you're hiding that small SIM card or S.D. card in a cabinet in coffee containers, right? You may miss it while you're there on a search warrant. We want the suspects to know that we're not going to miss it with the addition of Bubba to our sheriff's office.
Unbelievable. Carol?
And I know some people, because we had, years ago, for the city, we had probably one of the first police dogs many moons ago. But when they said when they're training them, they could be like the best house cat in the world. But soon as you give it a command, they jump right into the police mode.
And what's his motivation for working?
His motivation is food. He's a food treatment dog.
Oh my God, he belongs to us.
So you starve him until he finds something.
And that's the interesting part about this dog.
I'm going to have to call a dog warden, see if that's permitted.
Part of my job is to work with him all day long. So he has a certain amount of food that he gets fed, just like every dog. I have a dog, a family dog at home that gets several cups a day my wife feeds. He gets a certain amount for his weight. And so he always gets fed every day, because I always work with him every single day. So this morning, he found 11 devices this morning before we came over, while I was waiting for the meeting to start. And by that, let me just say, by that, I mean training devices. So I'm training with him. I'm hiding devices, bringing him in. He's finding them.
So did he get 11 pepperonis?
We got 11 big, nice handfuls of food, so. So he'll, yeah, he's a food reward. And that's really the only thing that kind of, I hate to say stinks, but everyone likes to give treats to a dog. And we have, you know, we're dog lovers at the sheriff's office, so that's one of the things that- But people bring toys in, and that's kind of his treat. So he loves getting the ball thrown to him, and that's kind of a treat for him.
Very nice, Jeff.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Demonstration, or?
Yeah.
Sure.
Oh.
I've just left my cellphone in my coat over there and to see if he wants to work with my mask off. I want him to be able to hear me better.
You're fine.
So what I'll do is I'll tell him to sit, and then I'll start telling him to search. And we'll just kind of go through. Here, Bubba. Sit, sit. You're on a leg. You ready to work? Let's work. You ready to work? Seek, 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 seek. Come on, seek, 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 seek. Show me. There it is. Yes. Good boy. So what he was hitting on was my cellphone in my pocket there. And he was in odor over here, because I was walking around with it, looking for a place to hide it. And then I laid it here. And I'll tell him to seek, like I said. And then when he sits, I'll tell him, "Show me." And he, more often than not, will point to the, if he knows, he'll kind of pinpoint it, and he'll point with his nose. And that's helpful for when you're going through drawers and stuff. He'll point to the drawer that he believes it's in.
Jeff, if you don't mind me asking, how did the dog get to training? How did that happen? Do you train him?
I did not train him. Todd Jordan, with Jordan Detection Canine, trains electronics detection dogs. And again, he has 50, he was the 51st dog. I believe there's 55 total now, all throughout the United States. And so these dogs are, like the sheriff had mentioned, were trained to be service dogs. And for whatever reason, they didn't succeed at that. I don't know what the reason was for him, but I believe it's probably because he likes to jump up sometimes. And so when you're a service dog, if you're elderly, that's not good for an elderly person. That's just my, I think that might be what it was. Other dogs maybe are afraid of wheelchairs, so some don't make that cut of service dogs. But then they will be given to Todd Jordan to train as electronic detection dogs. And they're all Labs, and a yellow or black Labs. I haven't heard of a chocolate Lab yet being trained, but Labs. So then Todd will train them for eight, about eight weeks. And he has, because human trafficking is just everywhere, and the children are victims a lot of the times, Todd has come up with a way to where he can train that dog fast, faster than if he were to bring me in and me train the dog. So what he does is he just trains me for two weeks to the dogs. What the dog does, he trains me to be able to see that, because he wants to get these dogs out on the street as fast as possible. So that's how he was trained. So he trained for eight weeks with Todd, and then the last two weeks, I was out in Indianapolis at schools and different places, training with him. And again, I'll be training all day long, every day, for the duration of his career.
Very nice. Very nice. Anybody have any questions?
I think he's just, I just love him.
That's really special.
He's a lot of names.
Yeah.
He just, everybody's crazy.
He's a good dog.
And really, he makes me look good. He does the work. I'm the guy that holds the leash, but he really is the one that does the work. But he really does make me look good. But this is the guy that has the nose, and he's got a big one, and I'm happy about it.
That's amazing. We've had several when I was in Austin Town, they just do a great job. It's pretty amazing to see.
I'm honored to do it.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Jeff. Sheriff commendable for what you do. I know you know tolerance level in any of these things with child pornography, whatever it may be. I know how your office is dedicated to doing that. And this is another testament to what you're doing for our community, keeping it safe.
We try to be as progressive as we can. You know, the last canine we got before him was Cliff, and Cliff's a trained bomb dog. Why did I get a bomb dog? We had a bomb threat to close down three, you know, three courthouses. And the closest one to us was Summit County at the time. And we had to wait and wait when a dog could have gone in there and done the work of 10 people doing the search, you know. So we went out and, you know, we just try and address the needs that we come across here in Mahoney County. And obviously, we've been so active with the Human Trafficking Task Force. And, you know, a dog like this, you know, is going to really help us out a lot. He's going to help us out quite a bit on search warrants. We have, you know, we're constantly developing new cases, unfortunately, you know. We're surprised to see as many cases that we're working on when we put together that task force. All right, Jeff, you can, I think we're good. Is everybody good?
Thank you for bringing him along with Jerry. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you for having me.
Bye, Bubba.
Bye.
Be a good guy, one of our new deputies.
Look at him, he's perfect.
I know.
Bubba, come see me. We'll talk about a raise with your boss.
Jeff Joseph, he's our lead TAC officer. That's one of his responsibilities, as well as warrants. He runs our warrants to basically- So this is just another task we put on. It just doesn't do the dog multi-task.
Nice.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was pretty neat, huh? Well?
I loved his namesake. Good guy.
Well, moving on, we have Mr. Bill Whitaker with us today. And I understand March is Developmental Disabilities Month. Is that correct?
Yes.
Bill, would you come up? Absolutely. Whenever you're comfortable with it.
Yeah, as you said, March is Didi Awareness Month, National Disability, you know, Developmental Disability Awareness Month. And I know that you have a proclamation for us, and obviously, we, on behalf of our board and the 1,500 individuals and families that we support, you know, I thank you for doing that. I know we do this a yearly thing. It's been a little strange the last two years. Typically, you come down to one of our buildings and visit, and we'll talk about, we'll do tours. But, yeah, again, you know, this last year has obviously been a struggle for a lot of people we serve. You know, we had to shut down Leonard Kurt School for a few months, much like all public schools, and we were able to kind of reopen. I really can't thank our residential providers enough. I think probably more of the burden fell on them during this pandemic than really any of us. You know, we at the board were able to adjust, work remotely with our staff. Well, when you're providing 24/7 residential supports, you've got to have people there to do that, right? And so our residential providers, many of those that you know, I know like Jimmy Sutton and Kathy Phil, you know, you know, Mike and Abby at New Leaf, I just, I can't really thank them enough for everything that they did to keep those home staff, to keep the number of cases low. Much like anybody else, we were hit with cases. Unfortunately, had a couple of deaths, you know, of individuals that we served. But for the most part, they did an incredible job of mitigating the cases by the way that they kind of tried to cohort the homes and what staff could come in and, you know, PPE. And, you know, I thank you also for CAREZAC dollars that you, you know, came our way. We use that to buy personal protective equipment and sanitizing products for our providers so that they could sanitize the homes, give their staff, you know, those products, sanitize their vehicles for getting people back and forth to day programming. So all of that stuff was an incredible help to us. And, you know, recognizing Didi Awareness Month for what it is and seeing people for who they are and their abilities, not disabilities and all that. But again, I've been remiss to say, everything that's happened over this last year and your support in other ways has helped us, you know, kind of support our entire system, you know, and our families. And the new normal that we're now working in, that hopefully we get back to our old normal here in a couple of months. Obviously, it's kind of making its way around and it's a mass vaccination site. So again, I appreciate all the support that you give us all the time, not just during Didi Awareness Month. This is not a one-month thing for you as commissioners. I know that. Our families know that. You know, 12 months out of the year, anytime we need anything, we just come down and ask. And the answer usually, what do you need, we'll help you. So we do appreciate that. So thank you.
We appreciate you, Bill. And we have a proclamation, resolution. We'd like to present you. Commissioners, we could come up. Dave, Carol?
We've got lots of news here.
Thank you.
We'd like to present this to you, and we have the Board of Mahoney County Commissioners, all the wonderful things that you have done over your career in dealing with the population of folks that you deal with. They're making us very proud. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. A lot of things today. A lot of good things happening. All right, well, we'll do Roxanne. We have Roxanne Seabass from United Way. We'll do her at the end, if that's okay. And at this time, we'll get into the business portion of our meeting. I need a motion to approve previous minutes of Board meeting number 10 and approval of bill for payment.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Middoogee?
Yes.
Commissioner Taffet County?
Yes. Motion to approve advertisement for bids.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is an advertisement for bid for Devon Avenue in the city of Camel. It is a resurfacing and improvement project that will take place between 16th Street to Struthers Liberty Road. And we're going out for bid. This is part of the CBDG fiscal year 2020 application.
Thank you, Anna. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve advertisement for bids, number one.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Journal entry, number one.
Motion to approve journal entry, number one.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Middoogee?
Yes. Yes. Agreements, letters A through N. Excuse me. We'll begin with Convention Visitors Bureau and Linda.
Hello. Letter A is in agreement with Bolero Sports, doing business as a professional bowling association. We are going to be having a tournament in May, May 7th through 9th. And this is for advertising services in support of that tournament. And letter B is in agreement with Travel Host for advertising services in the Ohio Golf Guide, the Bridgestone Tournament Guide, as well as their Vintage Ohio Guide.
Thank you, Linda. And domestic, letter C?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Oh, hi, Dawn.
Hi. Hello, Neency. Hi, Audrey. Hi, Jim. And all those other familiar faces out there in Zoomland. I feel like I'm at a family reunion. I had an all-day trial scheduled today, but it's settled. And I have to admit, I'm somewhat disappointed it's been so long. So but not to extend the meeting any further, but item C is our court's contract for legal research with Westlaw. It's a three-year contract for a total of $15,083.16 with the first year total of $4,928.52. And this is vital for the court so that we can address any ongoing and updated issues with the court. So we would respectfully request approval of that contract.
Thank you, Dawn. Good seeing you.
Yep, same here.
Okay, moving on. Engineers, Mr. Janetti, there he is.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Pat.
Letter D is in agreement with Fida Freightliner. These are for repairs to vehicle number 57 in the estimated amount of $1,086.22. These are non-general funds. Letter E is in agreement with Concord Road Equipment. This is for repairs to vehicle number 52 in the estimated amount of $4,997.39, also non-general. Letter F is in agreement with Concord Road Equipment as well for vehicle number 40 in the estimated amount of $6,273.71. Letter G is in agreement with Diversified Comfort Services. And this is to replace a defective furnace and A.C. unit at our District One facility in the estimated amount of $8,970, non-general funds. And letter H is in agreement with Valley Industrial Trucks. This is for repairs for a Daewoo G25SS forklift. And this is in the estimated amount of $1,194, also non-general funds.
Thank you, Pat. Lead, Phil.
Good morning. This is in agreement with American Pinnacle Construction for lit house control work and healthy homes work at 45 Claremont in the amount of $19,650.
Okay. Okay, Phil, thank you. Recycling.
Morning, Commissioners.
Hello, Lou.
Item J is an agreement with Holt Industries to purchase a satellite dumper. They were the lowest of three quotes. Satellite dumper will allow us to provide same-day service on Miss Curbside recycling throughout the county and also serve as a backup to our office paper recycling program. Items K and L are agreements with Nextar and WFMJ to advertise our special event programs this year, and this will hit all the airwaves in Mahoney County.
Good. Thank you, Lou. Sanitary, Pat.
Commissioners, letter E is in agreement with Jack DeHany Supply. This is for emergency repairs to our TV inspection truck in the estimated amount of $1,523.18. These are non-general funds. This is to repair the winch and cable that pulls the camera through the pipe.
Thank you. And Sheriff?
This is in agreement with the township of Canfield to provide police services for three years in the amount of $300,000 for one year payable to Mahoney County.
Good. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, motion to approve agreements.
Motion to approve number two agreements, A, two, and?
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Middoogee?
Yes.
Commissioner Taffet County?
Yes. Moving on, change orders. Lead, Phil?
Change order one, or letter A is a change order with W&amp;W Construction for additional lit house control work at 144 Creed Street, the amount of $1,500. And B is a change order with Gary Crim, Inc., for additional lit house control work at 524 East Dewey in the amount of $1,065, both non-general.
Thank you. Motion?
Motion to approve number three, change orders A and B.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Middoogee?
Yes.
Commissioner Taffet County?
Yes. Road closings. Pat?
Commissioners, letter A is amending journal entry 21-03-029. This was to close Stewart Road between Newcastle Road and Allison Drive. And we're amending this until March 26th of 2021. And this is for culvert replacements. Letter B, we're closing Struthers Road between Dobbins and U.S. Route 224 between March 22nd and the 26th, also for culvert replacement. And letter C is to close Baird Road between Columbiana Road and Route 617 between March 22nd and the 26th, also for culvert replacements. These are all related to the countywide paving that will occur this year.
Great. Thanks, Pat. Motion to approve road closing?
Motion to approve number four, road closing A through C.
Second. Roll call. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion to approve resolutions?
Motion to approve resolutions, additions, number one.
Second. Roll call. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Resolution of awards. Pat Janetti again.
You should let me sit up there.
Honestly, yeah, come on. I'll trade places with you.
Deal. All right. Letter A, this is the award, the Mahoney Avenue resurfacing to Lindy paving in the amount of $2,267,717. This is non-general fund, low bid, and 80% federally funded through ODOT. Letter B is the award of the 2020 OPWC Road and Bridge Safety Upgrade Program, also to Lindy paving in the amount of $1,288,252.80. Non-general, low bid, and this is 35% OPWC-funded.
Very good. Okay, motion?
Motion to approve number two resolutions of awards A and B.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Middoogee?
Yes.
Commissioner Taffet County?
Yes. Resolutions A through D. Audrey?
Commissioners, this is a resolution approving appointment of Argy Morales as the Director of Jobs and Family Services.
Really? Is she with us?
She's on there.
Where's she at? Audrey, you didn't tell me.
Anthony, I do apologize that I did not make you aware of this. I'd like to thank you guys.
Anything you'd like to say?
Yes, I thank all the Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners, your staff, for the confidence and appointing me to this position. I just want you to know that Jobs and Family Services and the staff here will do our job to service our clients and to service the public, even though during this challenging time, we are up with a task. And I have a very good qualified staff, administrators, and I know that we will do the best job to support the community and to support our Board of County Commissioners and whatever we need to do. And I thank you for the position.
Thank you, Audrey, very, very much. We know your heart and soul's been in that agency for years, and we're very proud to have you and glad you accepted the position.
Thank you.
Okay, data. Anybody from that? Jimmy, thank you.
This is a moral obligation to pay a company called Woods Windstream. They provided 800 number for some departments that have need. We're transferring over to AT&amp;T. It will be at a cheaper rate. And more obligation was to try to get them to extend agreement so we wouldn't have one, but that didn't happen.
Thank you, Jim. All right, Pat?
Commissioners, letter C is a resolution authorizing participation in the Ohio Department of Transportation for the purchase of sodium chloride, which is our rock salt for 2021.
Okay. Thank you. And Jimmy?
This is an ongoing commitment of our Commissioners and facilities to sanitize and disinfect our buildings as needed. This is for Austin Town and Boardman Courts.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Okay, motion?
Motion to approve number three resolutions, A through D.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Middy Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Taffacanti?
Yes. And at this time, is Roxanne with us? There she is. Hi, Roxanne. The floor is yours.
You, thanks so much for having me today. I just wanted to pop on on behalf of United Way and first thank the commissioners for the CARES Act funding from last year. It really, really helped us make a true difference in the community. You know, last year was really tough, and we're really looking, we're looking forward to 2021, but we are still facing some tough times, especially in the nonprofit sector. But I just wanted to recap a little bit of what the CARES Act funding was able to do for us in 2020. We were able to leverage that and move into 2021 with a lot of the projects that we started because of the generous funding you were able to provide us through that. We have our Saturday of Caring, and it's actually coming up. We do it every third Saturday, and it's coming up this weekend. And that's where we go out to senior shut-ins and families that cannot get out or should not be out because of the virus. And each month, we now serve 562 people. That's, we were able to raise our number two. So when we started last year around this time, you know, we started with 120 households. We are now up to 330 households, so 330 stops. That's over 562 people. The majority are seniors. We have 223 seniors, 194 children, and 145 adults. So since April of last year, we've made, we've affected over 7,000 people. Some of their repeats, but that's 7, 7,800 people with this program. And your funding, the CARES Act funding provided by the county, was really able to allow us to grow that program in a lot of ways. We now provide fresh meat, fresh produce, fresh vegetables to all these families. We started out with just non-perishables. We've also leveraged the money that you guys were able to grant us to help some local businesses. So we have a contract with O'Donut to give them goodies every month. We also have a contract with Yo Fresh, which is a meal prep company based in Canfield, and they do freshly prepared meals for our recipients every other month. So that's been a really great addition to this, and we really were able to leverage the funding you were able to provide to do all of this and above and beyond. And really, we've been able to engage so many more volunteers. I think since April of last year, we've engaged 400 new volunteers that have never really done anything with United Way before, so this has been incredible. A lot of other agencies had to shut down because of the virus, but we needed all hands on deck to be able to do this, and we've really engaged a ton of people. Right now, we have about 100 that help out. Every third Saturday, they rotate in and out. We've always been nervous about, are we going to have enough drivers? We usually have about 45 drivers each month. I never have to worry about how many drivers. We're getting high school groups coming in on buses. Last month, we had South Range. Their boys' basketball team were there before a tournament game in the freezing cold. Some of those boys did not have gloves on, and I felt like a mother duck being like, wear your gloves. But they were out there, ready to work, and this month, we have Alec Christian coming, Boardman High School. We have YU students, so it's really been able to grow and expand our footprint, even to show what we can do in the county. And I think people are seeing really countywide how we're able to take the lead on this, and you guys were really able to help us with that. With that CARES Act funding, we also provided about $65,000 in emergency grants. And moving forward, we did emergency grants last year, but really moving forward, we're hoping to do recovery and rebuilding grants. You know, the outlook for nonprofits right now is kind of dismal, not to be honest. A lot are still struggling because the need is, has grown significantly still, and they've had to cut back on staff. They've lost fundraisers. You know, they're really kind of coming to us still, asking for some grants and some funding, and we really pared down our funding process, which we typically do every two years. But we put this emergency process in place that really kind of cuts down on the paperwork and the bureaucracy of it, and allowing them to get the funding they need to bridge the gap between the emergency, the rebuilding, and the, you know, moving forward. So we are still working within that. We work closely with the schools. Your funding was able, we were able to reach almost 2,000 families with grocery store gift cards in the 18 school districts in Mahoning County, including, we did St. Joseph's Provider School, we did Valley Christian, we did Youngstown Community School, so not just the traditional schools, but all of the surrounding ones as well. And the last piece we're looking forward to, and really establishing something within the county, is a volunteer center. So we're in the exploratory phases right now, building or renovating an existing building for a physical volunteer space. And part of the funding we used from the CARES Act was to start a volunteer center. And we did that with a virtual platform right now, and we're working with YU to get that up and running properly, but we're looking to do a physical space within the next two years that would really be in the center, probably the Boardman area, to really attract people from all over the county. My goal is to get those kids from South Range, to get those kids maybe from Sebring, to get the kids from Canfield to come in and help us in that centralized spot. You know, we have the presence downtown, but we want to expand. We are, we serve the entire county, not just Youngstown. So you were able to help us with that, and I know moving forward, we're really looking to provide more flexible support to our nonprofits and continue to grow these projects that we really see are going to be needed even as we grow out of this pandemic. So we just wanted to thank you and just let you know that we continue to work hard for the entire county, and we can't do it alone. We still need your help and support, anything you guys can do for us. We just wanted to let you know that we put those dollars to work. We are helping people in need. I personally go out and shop for one of the ladies on our list myself, and I see her every, every couple of weeks, and it's been a great experience for me personally. I know Anna just jumped on. She's actually delivering this week for us. You guys have been out there. We've had great participation, and it's really kind of shows how Mahoning County can come together during these difficult times and really help us. You know, our theme last year was Rise United, and I think together, we were really able to rise above all of this, but our work's far from over. So thank you, and just, you know, keep us in mind as you guys move forward as well.
Carol?
Roxanne, thank you, and thank United Way for all the help that you've given us. We support by funding, but you support by the bricks and mortar, so to speak, of the volunteer and the help throughout the valley. Dave and I were at one of the giveaways that you had, the, you know, the food drives. Unbelievable how you have, it's so organized. I mean, people drive up with their car. The one couple I knew, originally, they were from the east side, and that's where they were going to go deliver the groceries and the box groceries. I couldn't believe, says, we go through the east side, and we go to the old house that I lived in, and she said it's the best experience we could ever have. Her and her husband do that every, every month that you have that. On behalf of the St. Joe's students and Father Swires, I thank you for the help that you've given those children up at a non-traditional school and all the other schools that you've helped the young people with cards and food. Our children, people don't realize that this pandemic, it's not even just the pandemic. We have issues in all the schools all over Mahoning County with food and with being able to eat. Breakfast is at school and things like that. So when school is not in session, it's very difficult for some of our young people to get the nutrition they need to learn. So I give you credit for that. I want to thank you and keep it up. Anytime you need us, we're here.
Thank you.
And we might be able to partner up with that location. So keep in touch with Audrey and the three of us, and maybe we can help out with that.
For sure. It's something we're excited about, and we really see a need for that, too. So the two really big needs that we saw were the delivering to the seniors and shut-ins that we're going to continue because that's just a need. Some of these individuals had no way of getting out. The one lady, Carol, that I go to, her name is Carol, she has no car, she's in a wheelchair. You know, we're helping her in different ways right now. I'm actually going over there this afternoon to help her with her new cell phone. So we created relationships of and beyond, and I just just meet all of our volunteers. So with this volunteer center, we really want to create a centralized place where we can serve the entire county. We have a couple that goes out to Sebring. They would not miss it for the world. They love going out there. They, these people have formed relationships with the people that are, so it's been, we are serving so many needs, not just getting them the food, but the relationships and the communication and everything that, and we're working with our nonprofits, with Direction Home and Catholic Charities, the Y. So it's not, we're not doing it alone. We're helping these agencies do it, and that's really our goal.
Thank you. And you know, Roxanne, Carol, I agree, and Dave, and you know, we want to thank you for the coordinated efforts that you and your organization have done. You know, logistically, the way you've identified the vulnerable population, people who we did not know. And I talked to Bob Hannan yesterday. He actually called me, and he said that you are going to continue to sustain these visits now that we really know who these folks are and continue those relationships of helping people. And we just again want to thank you for the great efforts, your volunteers, and all that you did to help us with our people. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I echo Carol and Anthony's sentiments. Thank you so much, you and Bob, and all the volunteers have done an amazing job. It's so well organized. You know, we were there volunteering, you know, throughout the, you know, over in Southwoods. You know, it really is just like clockwork and the different things that you have donated and, you know, and Carol, she has to feed us all. Remember, she brought Briar Hill pizzas and passed them out so that we all had something to eat while we were there. But yeah, it's, you know, it's rewarding. It's sad, and people are grateful, you know, and it's really something, like you said, that touches your heart, and everybody needs to realize what a difficult situation so many people are still in. So thank you for all your efforts, Roxanne.
Well, thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Okay, well, for the good of the order, the elected officials or department heads care to comment. Anybody up on the screen? Audrey? Lou, Karen, anyone? No?
Commissioner Taffacanti? I'm just going to say this. Again, thank you, but I know that I am going to excel here because every time you say the name Audrey, we know the leader Audrey Tillis has done great things for the Commissioner's Office and the county. And so I get a lot of applause because they think you're talking about Audrey Morales. So that's a great thing. So if anything happens that's not so great, remember it's Audrey Tillis, guys, that caused all of that.
I like that one.
Thanks a lot.
You're lucky you're over there, Audrey. Audrey M. and Audrey T.
You're going to have to title that because I hear...
AT, AM.
Okay.
AT and the AM, right?
That's it. Thank you.
Carol?
I want to congratulate you, Audrey, on your position. I know you'll do a great job over there. You have a great staff. You have great administrators. You have a great support group here with Audrey Tillis and Karen U Haley.
Yes.
And Nancy, so you have the support group. We're always here. They're always here, more so than we, and we have a good prosecutor's office. So anything in question, you know where to go to get the answers or help with that. So I wish you the best. I just want to thank everybody that's on. I want to congratulate Jerry, Sheriff Green, and with Bubba. And it's just, it's a great thing that having Bill Walker, as a good friend of mine for many years, went through the city and even into the county, to have the dog. I mean, I think he, up there, wherever he's at, he's just shining now because, man, he was, he was a good deputy all the way around.
He's a deputy that touched all of us. Yeah, this was just so fitting. All of the dogs come with a name when they're being trained at the kennel, but this just gave us an opportunity to honor William Walker. He's a great guy.
I could give you some stories of the city when he used to drive the truck to my house and say, you got to see what's going on in the fourth ward. And Dave is familiar with this area because it abutted Austintown. And he would, I think you did come one time. We had a poacher. Is that what they call the people that would just live on, lived on the land? I mean, I could, I thought I was living in, I didn't, I couldn't believe this was going on in the 20, like now. And I, I looked at that. He drove me back there. I said, I don't want to go back in the field. What are we doing? And he says, oh, this is interesting. And we went back, and oh my God. I couldn't believe it. And then I called, of course, he was a trustee at the time. I says, well, half this property is in Youngstown and half's in Austintown. What part do you want to take? So congrats and have a safe week. And Bill Whitaker, again, thank you. Developmental disabilities, you've done a fabulous job. You're always there to help us. You have, you also have a staff that's over and above.
Very lucky.
Oh, and with the pandemic, some of your caseworkers, and it's very difficult to educate when you can't see some of our DD people, and for your caseworkers to actually go to the homes and sit outside the door and help train them was phenomenal. So congratulations, well deserved. And you, too, we're always here if you need us. Okay, I'm done.
David?
Yeah, well, while that, Struthers Janetti is hanging out in the top screen there, you know, in Hollywood squares, we have to wish Pat a little belated happy birthday. Pat turned the big 4-9 this past week. So happy birthday, Pat. We'd be remiss if we didn't wish you, wait till next year, God willing, and the creek don't rise. You know, big 5-0, you're in big trouble.
Yeah, we'll take that slowly.
Happy birthday. Bill, I couldn't agree more, just, you know, the amazing time that you guys have done through some just ever-changing times, you know, and not the pandemic, just with, you know, how the state has, you know, created the situation we're in and, you know, trying to get the Youngstown Developmental Center back up and running and, you know, just all the work and the effort that you and your staff have done. You know, it's, it never goes unnoticed, even though the interaction's not as frequent as it used to be, but you and your board, great people, great job that you do, and it's very much appreciated. Sheriff, I love the dog, you know, but one thing I got to tell you, though, when Carol calls you because she lost her cell phone, don't be bringing that dog over to my Carol's cell phone, you know.
I might just want to visit.
When she's jogging, when she's jogging and people run her off the road and she loses her phone, that dog's not supposed to come on Carol's phone dial. So thank you for that. You know, we get a lot of calls on, you know, it just never, it amazes me, like the day after they announce the stimulus money going to the city, going to townships and going to the county. What are you going to spend the money on? We don't even have the requirements yet. We don't even know what you're permitted to spend it on, and everybody wants to know, where are you, where are you spending it? Well, you know, we don't know. So, you know, obviously, our intent is always to help businesses, help people, you know, help people that are in need, like Roxanne brings to the surface there with United Way and so many others. You know, we want to do what we can from an infrastructure standpoint. We don't know what the limitations are, you know. So as we move through it, you know, we'll definitely, you know, prioritize where we can, you know, disperse the money and where it'll serve the public best, you know. But our, but our intent as a board has always been just, whether it's the United Way, the DD Board, or all of them, are to help the businesses and the people, or the people and the businesses in Mahoning County. So that's our primary objective first. And I would be remiss if I, if I didn't say that, you know, we lost a very big community servant in our, in our county this past week with Rufus Hudson passing away. It was, you know, a shock to all of us. I think we're the same age. And, you know, Rufus was a gentleman. He was a city councilman. He, he was a public servant, worked for the city, just a good person. He turned me on to the meatloaf at V2's. They have the best meatloaf in the world when we go over there to lunch. And we'd, we'd try to buy each other lunch every time we saw it on the menu. But, you know, it's sad that we lost somebody, you know, in the situation, you know. that we lost somebody, you know, in the situation, you know, to COVID, you know, and we need to get out and get our shots because it's not over. It's, you know, we see people relaxing and letting down their guard. You know, it's not a time to let down our guard. We've, we're, you know, like within the last, we're in the home stretch, you know, so let's make sure we cross the finish line before we start to change things. So my condolences to Rufus Hudson's family and the city for a big loss and a person such as Rufus's stature, so.
Thank you.
And I.
Carol, would you like to say something on Rufus? I know you worked with him.
I did, and it's hard for me to. It's hard to lose your friends. I can't. My condolences to the family, God bless everybody, but it's, it starts hitting home when you start losing your friends.
Thank you, Carol, and I know how close you were with Rufus and Dave, and I've known Rufus for years, too, and my condolences to him and his family as well, and he always used to call me my brother from another mother, and I'm certainly going to miss seeing him down at New Bethel Church. And Rufus, through the years, would always call and give me information. I learned from Rufus. He had a big heart, he was always community oriented, but he always understood people, and he was a God-fearing man, and I'm going to miss those conversations and seeing him at all the events in the city of Youngstown. I want to commend Jerry Green on Bubba, you and your staff, Cappy, and all that you do for our community. And Bill Whittaker, you know, you talked about the pandemic, and, you know, you already had your challenges dealing with the population that you have been dealing with for a long time, plus the pandemic on top of that. You did yeoman's work, you and your staff, for taking care of those folks and running that, that agency for us. And Roxanne, thank you for what you do at United Way, you and Bob Hannon. You're a staple in our community, and we're proud to call you, call you our friends and partners, and we want to continue that relationship for what you do. And last but not least, my dear friend Audrey Morales, I want to congratulate you, Audrey, well deserved. Nobody knows the agency like you. You've been there a long time. I know your mother, Juanita, is very proud, she's smiling down at you, and I want to thank you, not as a commissioner, but as a citizen, for over the years that I have dealt with you, even my days in Congressman Jim Taffacant's office, all the way up through, every time I would call you with a problem, you figured it out, and you'd call me back, and you would do your best to resolve it, and you've continued to do that through your career, and I want to thank you for that. Wish you all the best. Thank you. Okay. That being said, Nancy, our next meeting?
Could be next Thursday, right here.
Fantastic. Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Middy Wiggetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Taffacanti?
Yes, thank you.